Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due and justice for all.
All right, any other community comrades, any sign up for community forums? Any conference of interest declarations? We have one addition to the agenda before we adopt it. We're gonna move adjournments to number 12. And number 11 will be contract approval. So can I get a motion to adopt the agenda with those changes?
I have motion.
Broke? Enter. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. All right, we got, it's gonna be kind of a jumble a little bit. We got people showing up at some point, so we'll jump into executive session. That won't take very long at all, and then we'll come back. So we're just gonna go and get the, where we need to go.
You bet.
Uh, celebrations.
Nothing that's really reported to me unless there's anything else out there that, from the community or anything else. Welcome to the doldrums of February.
Yeah. Even next month, folks, I'll see.
Yeah, we'll see for sure.
Business manager.
So I don't have much to say. My audit's about done. Thought I'd have the final draft this week, but I don't. Anyway, and then my other thing is just a reminder that school board petitions are due on the 23rd. And, yeah. So if anyone wants to.
Thank you. Anything else? Good?
That's it.
Uh, plant maintenance, busing.
I'm here at your sometime.
I was hoping you were gonna show up.
I'm not gonna read through everything, but I'll hit the high points. Old gym project is still coming along, kinda stalled out because it, things started catching up on everything. I was in Black King City, stopped working on that, so we're getting back into it, work on flooring. Some quotes on some of that stuff over there, but walls substantially, we gotta put a door on. Moose is gonna be a little reduced electrical, the kind of those some switches and the power alarm system gonna back up. Projects moving along. The roofing project, so we, and we've been going to go to bids on that. Looking closer at the quote we had, they weren't quoting the exact material we wanted to use for the roof. So they were quoting using the ballasted system like it's up there, so that's the rock. And all that, we wanna get rid of the rock and do a fully adhered like all the rest of our roofs are. So they're all kind of the same roof. So, um, we contacted company to come and look at that. We gave us a different quote there through our purchasing cooperative, so we can avoid the bid process by delaying them. So I'm waiting, it'll be three weeks, we'll hear back on the quote. Just, uh, no, like a fully adhered product's probably gonna be a little bit more money than a ballasted. Well, ballasted is pretty much the cheapest way you can go. But the other product would be a lot better, a lot longer duration, so. We can hear back on that. Routine inspection on our boilers happened. The day before it happened, we had a flame out on one of our boilers in the elementary room. It melted all the internal electronic components in there. So that was impeccable timing, but, um, so we're down one boiler in the elementary, we're down a three out of four. Had a huge issue. There's, uh, attempts right now, it's fine, they can keep up with the three, but we obviously need to look at. And then kind of talking about, we need to look at boilers here at some point, so. Now, now we're, of course we'll look at some boilers, because that one definitely needs repair and order replaced, so. That'll be coming, I'm working on quotes as far as getting pricing on that. As far as whether we just replace it or replace apparel now, and then do two more, you know, a few years down the road, and tell that one, so. Those kind of big things. Technically, we applied for DHS grant to help pay for the security cameras that we're kind of trying to get after for the outside stuff. So we put in for the full cost on that. We won't hear for a couple months on our award there if we get awarded. But we put in for grant money on that. Rest of the stuff is, like you said, you can kind of read through. Yeah. Buses are so far so good. I haven't had to send anything major in buses. We had to fix a couple doors last year because they kept popping.
On the fencing.
American fence has to come back, so there was a miscommunication with them. They thought they were done, they obviously are not.
Okay.
We withheld payment.
Well, so I have them, they'll go through, but I'm not sending it until they come.
We're withholding their last, the final payment until they complete their work.
Okay.
As of the last time I contacted them, last Friday, he said they would be scheduling that this week to get up here.
I was told there's pallet, quite a bit of fence, or?
Yeah, so there's, yeah, there's a pallet of fence of the fencing. We, as you remember, we elected to install the actual fence ourselves, but there's obviously with those gates. You can see that they gotta come in and finish a bunch of work that is related to those gates that they headed on. So cut off post cap, re-put the structure back together. All we were gonna do is actually string the new fence out, so.
Questions?
So first thing I wanna talk about is, normally, we used to have, every year we'd do a showcase for the school and try to get people to come in and see all the things that we offer our school. So I was talking to teachers about some of our declining enrollment rates and things like that. And they really thought it would be a great idea to have a showcase. We're a little late in the year, but what I was thinking, I looked at the calendar. April 18th is a, it's a Thursday evening, we don't have anything on the calendar that night. And basically, usually the whole school's here, the students do things, and people can come in and see everything that we do at our school. And we just put it out everywhere so everybody knows what's happening. We used to have probably four or 500 people come through. That was a pretty big deal. So, um, if we did that, if we decided to do that, what I would like to do is then, if we have the showcase on that Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00, the next day is a teacher day, is just to give them that half day off the next day for that.
So how long is the showcase in two weeks?
It'll probably be from 4:00 to 7:00 that night, 4:00 to 7:30. I have 4:00 to 7:00, but those are just tentative times, I didn't, I didn't have stuff on that or anything. So, um, the one act play was presented this year by our new, what do you call yours? Advisors?
Directors.
Directors, there you go. Ms. Jensen and Ms. Hooks were the play advisors, they did an awesome job. They went to JVC on January 24th and earned.
Well, we had, Colin got the top acting award, which means like all three judges voted superior for you. Like they voted you into it. And then we had two that got the second acting award, what's that called? Second best.
Second best.
Yeah, they got playing medals.
Mm-hmm, um, and so that was exciting. And then we had three more get honorable mention, and so, but they did a really good job. And I think what we just keep saying is, um, they're involved in so many things. So when we could practice, it was always late at night, or during study hall, or during lunch. And they were really accommodating and worked with us on that, too. In other schools, they devote only time to play, like that's the only thing they're involved in. And so I think it's cool that here they can be involved in so many different things and still be that successful, but on a great play.
That was, that was very good. If you didn't get the seat of play, I would encourage you to have your seat, because they did a really nice job this year. Let's see. Quarter three midterms were Thursday this last week. Each year, the FFA seniors receive their state FFA degrees. And there's, I asked for the list of how they earn it, but it's a whole page and a half of things. So I wasn't gonna read it all. But this year, it's Kate Hamilton, Peyton Chemnitz, Grant Timm, Tierney Green, Sadie French, and Kelsey Roberts. So I know it takes a lot of extra time they have to dedicate to get all those things to make sure that they get that degree. The online platform, I sent to you guys, mine didn't print right, but is with our online classes. So we talked about, because we use a cellus right now. And what we found out is that the state doesn't, the state only backs two, like two or three platforms. They don't back a cellus. So edge annuity I put in there, that's one that I know the state backs, and so we could compare. I talked to Lori a little bit, basically same type of thing. We just probably wouldn't make as much money off it, but we would still be being able to get money for our students, like collecting money. They're still part of our enrollment. So something to think about, I just started it, it's a very rough draft, just ideas, so you can look at it. We can talk about it, you know, I don't know, another time. Bus routes, right away last, prior to weeks ago, I stopped talking to Mr. Utech. Make sure all of our bus routes were picking up on the right side, and that we were not crossing highways, things like that, due to some incidents, unfortunately. So it was a really good time for us to make sure we had everything covered. And he said, of course, they were, and he's always made sure that they're picked up on the right side. I think we had trouble with one pickup spot, and that's just because right now it's muddy, it's really muddy, so did he get stuck in there? We had four new students move into the district this week, or last week, I guess. They're all in elementaries. And then on tomorrow, I guess, at the basketball game, American Bank and Trust will be awarding, I don't have this on, we started, our Warbird Spirit Card funds. And so with those funds, um, it was kind of hard to come up with ideas. It was $3,800, but we ended up, I talked with Dave, and the idea was to do some treadmills and some rollers for up in the old gym when we get that all going, and I, I talked with Jim as well. And so Dave's got some connections, and so he hooked us up with some rolling equipment and some treadmills. And so I think we're gonna get, we should be able to get two rollers and two treadmills, I believe. Right, Dave?
The bikes.
Oh, they're bikes, I'm just kidding. They're not treadmills, they're bikes. I knew that. Staff trainings. This last month, they talked about, in Lunch and Law, they talked a lot about ISS versus OSS for special education kids. You know, the laws are a lot different for a special education kid versus a regular education kid. If you're a special education kid, you can only be out of your regular schooling for 10 days. And at that point, you have to do a whole determination. So, um, a lot of good learning there. And then on Friday this week, we have teacher in-service. And Mr. Rice and Ms. Keeler will be presenting one of their professional development, I, that they did this last summer for lots of teachers, right? What's it called again? The teacher's heart?
Yep.
So, and that's all I have, I think.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I, mine's pretty straightforward, a lot of the deals with plant management and everything on there. But Dave touched, touched on the boilers, the roofs, and all of that, on the roof and all of that good stuff. We'll be meeting again with the track and football committee on the 21st. And then also during this last month, I met with Dave and Amy concerning capital outlay and plans for the next five years. So these are things that are really rough, that we will be running by even in a more formal mode, I will say. But these are things that we've been thinking about and trying to see where we would go with all of that. So everything's explained in that, and I won't necessarily bore you with all of that information.
Tom, has anybody talked to you as far as on that track committee area? There's a couple people that are dropping off there.
One due to a health issue that has flat out told me. Other than that, I haven't heard from anybody else yet. But yeah, one member.
I would say there was two.
Okay, well, I can reach out again before that next meeting. You know, who's on, I know that we're going to be bringing one in, too, so. So that would be good. Still working on the Silver Rights data collection. But one thing curriculum wise that I do wanna point out, that I do not have here, but at the last Huron Superintendent's meeting, Dr. Craig Steinhoff, myself, and then Hitchcock Tulair, and Sandborn Central, we are reapplying for a collaborative CTE grant. It looks pretty good. And so that was something that, you, you know me with the CTE stuff, I was excited to hear about that, to move forward. And Huron's been doing their due diligence in, you know, even building plans down the road. But wow, if we can, if we can get some of that going, it'd really be good. You guys have heard me talk about the mobile labs and the ability to bring students over there. And we just really feel that moving forward, this is, this is definitely gonna fit into the vision of what we want, what we want some graduates to look like. But, and then just moving forward, Mitchell Superintendent's meeting last week. And then the legislative sections are in full swing. There, there is a bill out there, I can't remember the bill name right offhand, because there's a ton of them. But actually trying to set the minimum teacher salary in South Dakota. And move forward with that. But I sent Jim a spreadsheet of all of those schools today, and where some of these schools, wow, what they're at. And then I can go on the other end, I know some of these other schools, wow, what they're at. And, uh, but it, on the spreadsheet, and Jim can share it, too. But it lets you know how far above or below this 45,000 threshold you are. And that was kind of neat to see as well. In a shell, that's what I've got going on.
Just what they're looking at is 45,000 minimum? Is that right?
Yeah. But, you know, that can go into the education committee, and they can amend whatever they want to, so.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering what they were suggesting.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna be a ban.
Yep. Just a little out of the box thinking. I had Mr. Rice approach Hitchcock about the possibility of sharing a band teacher. They seem to be pretty open to it. You know, we could each come up with a satisfactory financial obligation, and we could make it work. Given the fact there were 15 openings in the state?
Yep.
In that range, so. There's lots of things to figure out, the negotiations going forward, but I think there's an opportunity there that, you know, if we get an energetic person, maybe they would look at marching band possibly, you know, those type of things. But we'll, um, keep it kind of ongoing with them, but it's at least, you know, we talked about an online teacher at one time, and I think this would be a better option than that, so. They had talked to other districts and also, so I know their, their little attitudes. Okay, progressing on?
Absolutely. And I think I had mentioned to you that we had a young man coming through here who's going into the senior year. And wouldn't mind seeing if we can get creative with, with that one in discussions moving forward. Thank you, Jim.
You all right to real quick, executive session right now?
Sure.
Uh, we're gonna do just a short 10-minute executive session. I'm guessing that's all it'll take, five to 10 minutes. Where we can meet, so. Just. Oh, yes. All right. Should send over reports. Core. How about committee reports?
Just along that with Russ, previous to the board meeting, we just talked about any busing issues, any concerns. Did a nice job of explaining the routes. Talked a little bit about updating buses in a couple years.
Yeah, we, he was saying number eight is our oldest bus, it's currently about 200,000 miles. He said 15 years is kind of, plus getting a little bit of age on it, and that one right now is at 15 years. He says it's in good shape, but probably in 2025, 2026, if we have the opportunity to do that trade and get a little value out of that, it would probably be a smart one. And that's a 59 passenger bus. We've got a couple of 66s. He didn't feel that it was a need to go bigger, probably keep in that 59.
But that was that three persons a seat though, right?
Yes.
Your people are seated.
Yeah. Yeah, so a 66 passenger bus, if you're taking it to activities, you're probably closer to 44 passenger bus. Because you're not gonna put, you know, 17, 18-year-olds through to a seat.
He was saying 2025?
Yeah, 2020. He said it's, you know, it's embarring catastrophe, you know, a motor transmission or something. He said it's a good bus. He actually prefers that one right now, so. He feels, and our average bus use is 15,000 to 18,000 miles a year, and it's currently at 200,000 miles.
So he'd like a new bus at 25,000?
Definitely start looking. You know, I don't know that program that we've used a couple times, the buyback or whatnot, if that is available.
There's a certain amount of time that it opens, so probably next time it opens, we should do it. Because then it takes about less than order to bus it to, to be near your house.
So, yeah, that's what we're. If we did something, you know, this summer, the next summer, that'd be, you know, in 26 or 27, so.
Okay, thank you, guys.
And then one more alibi. The, um, Mr. Hooks is no longer in the, getting the bus driver's license. Carter is ready for his driver's test, and Austin has, I think, one test remaining. And then we'll have two more CDLs.
All right, consent agenda. Everybody look through the previous minutes and all that? Okay. Terrible emotion. We get a second?
Second, Ashley.
Ashley? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. All right. Nothing to pose. Dance team proposal.
Okay, I got little girls in the gym. Um, I would like to start the dance, a dance team. It's part of cheer, but it's not, it is its own separate sport. So I don't really prepare anything. I've had a few students come up to me interested in this, so I'd like to, you know, get into the goings of that.
So I, I've been to more cheer competitions than I care to. Now, I know dance has many different variables. Are you talking team dance? I, I know they have jazz and they.
Yep, so they have jazz.
Are we looking at all of the above?
Jazz, pom, hip-hop. What's that?
All of the above, or?
I think right now it sounds like they're just interested in hip-hop.
Okay.
It's, it's not as technical as jazz or pom. Pretty much, if you like to dance, you can do hip-hop. So I think we would have more interest in that anyways.
Is dance kind of like what our, our students drive to Mitchell for? Like, would it take place of that, or?
No, that's still, that's club cheer, that's, that's basically like competition cheer. It's just like a Y-ball, but.
So would, within your capacity, would you be okay handling it? Or are you, you know, between the two of you, would you, would you need extra help, or are you?
No, you know, the plan is to, you know, it'll have its own practice. And, but we'll all go to the same competition. We'll share a lot of the girls with cheer and dance, most likely do both. And, but there will be some that just do dance and some that just do cheer. But yeah, practices would be on its own, and it's basically separate, but together, it's very confusing.
Yeah, I, I understand. So are you just asking us permission to go ahead?
Well, it would be like the payment as a head coach, you know.
Do you want an assistant, or just a head coach?
Um, I would like an assistant.
Do you need any additional equipment?
Uniforms?
Uniforms. That would be what we would need to start.
But as far as mats and everything?
Nope, it's on the basketball floor, so. Don't need any of that stuff.
So, so you, you'll need, you have an assistant for cheer, and then you want an assistant for dance?
Right. Kylie's head, so she would come along with me on this journey.
She did.
Yeah.
So, is, I know choreography starts for cheer in early summer, is it the same type of?
We would go to another choreography camp for hip-hop, yes.
Are there any other fees involved in that? Isn't there something like with music?
That's all lumped into the choreography. Your, what you pay is per cheerleader or per athlete, and then you get the rights to the music, and they go with their company. And you kind of tell them what you want, like last year we had a disco theme, so our music had that in it. And it says, "Woozy, Woozy Western Warbirds" and all that, but that is included with the price, so. With the gap.
Okay.
And when would it start, sorry?
Um, I would do tryouts at the same time as I would do cheer tryouts.
Would they be in both?
Yes, they can.
When is cheer tryout, I'm sorry?
Uh, April.
April, okay.
Someone's wonderful.
Thank you, guys.
Fran, thank you. Is there a certain date you have to try, have a dance team? Do you know?
I looked and I didn't.
Do you know Austin?
I don't know that.
I just wanna make sure it's not, you know.
No, I think it's just that you have to have two competitions in, to qualify for the state competition. So just anytime the season starts.
I would check up with the High School Activities Association, because anytime you start a new sport, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Do you think they're able to do the esports?
We're already here, can we just tap the board?
Presentation for either of them.
What is that?
1-8-9-3-9-7.
Oh, I do.
Was that back in my head?
1-8-9-3-9-7. Okay, we can see you here.
Perfect. Yeah, I can hear you guys, okay?
We can see, we're, we're using your screen, so you got, you have on yours?
Uh, yep, yep, yeah, I can share my screen here, too, if you guys need to see what, what I got here, so. Let me know if you can see, the power cord does pop up there.
Yeah, that was good, go ahead, Yan.
Okay, sounds good, yeah, I, it sounds like I have about 15 minutes. Appreciate you guys having me tonight, I guess I'll just kind of give you a rundown on what we've done with high school activities. And kind of talk about the esports season, we're gonna come in up for next year and see if that's something you guys would wanna get ours. Um, so our esports season kind of follows the basketball season timeframe. Uh, it starts up in November, runs through kind of that February timeframe, and then that state tournament in March. We do have our esports state tournament coming up for this year. Uh, I believe it's March 22nd and 23rd at South Coast State University. That'll be at Club 71, connected to Dana-Dyckell Stadium, so open invite, if anyone wants to come check that out. Uh, we've been doing that event in North Dakota now for three years. This will be our first event doing it in South Dakota this year, so. Uh, any questions? I guess I can't really see if anyone's face or anything, so if you have any questions, feel free to board them out or tighten in the chat.
Sounds good.
Um, kind of a background, we destination by South Coast High School Activities, Dr. Swartos. About this time last year for a pilot program. Uh, we had 30 schools sign up for that pilot program, and that's who's running our first season here. Uh, there's a couple schools near you guys, we got Woonstop. Uh, there's a couple of schools near you guys. We got, uh, uh, Woodstock's in the program, Northwestern up in Mallet's in the program. Uh, Warner, uh, we'll be adding Watertown and Lawrence for next year. Uh, a couple of other schools in the area we're definitely having conversations with as well, so. Um, jumping into, uh, the, the game titles. We got four game titles stationed for this upcoming season. Uh, the four game titles are Rocket League, uh, Chess, uh, League of Legends and Super Smash Bros. Those are the four game titles that high school activities chose to, uh, move forward with for this season. Kind of a quick background on why schools are starting these esports programs. Uh, we see, uh, it's really getting a group of students that's not being touched by other activities. Uh, eighty percent of our students that participated in esports program last year were not involved in any other after-school athletics or arts. So really giving those students an opportunity to get involved, um, giving the school an opportunity to hold those students to the same GPA requirements uh, and attendance requirements to hold the other athletes to. Um, I was a three-sport athlete in high school. Uh, I did hockey, football, track and field. Uh, wasn't a gamer until after I got to, uh, after I got through college, actually, at Southern Esports Company, so. Uh, lots of, lots of jobs out there in the esports industry, uh, and lots of college opportunities as well. Stop and take a break there. Any questions, Hannah?
No, I think we're good.
Oh, awesome. Colleges with esports programs in your guys' region, uh, SDSU in Brookings, Madison has an esports program. Uh, USD has an esports program. Uh, Northern State in Aberdeen is working on getting their esports program off the ground. Um, out in Rapid City, School of Mines and Black Hills State have esports programs, as well as some of the smaller technical colleges in the region too. Uh, a quick thing that I want to touch on here is the technology requirements. Uh, you have a couple of different options when it comes to technology. Lots of schools use, um, have the students use their own devices their first year. So we surveyed about five thousand students across North Dakota, South Dakota, uh, to see what device they have. About ninety-five percent of students have the devices they already need to run the program. Um, other options, schools like Aberdeen, uh, schools like Brookings, uh, some of the, even the smaller schools now like Warner are building esports labs or retrofitting current labs at the school to accommodate their esports program. Um, we don't sell esports equipment, which like if this is something you're interested in doing, uh, we've helped lots of schools get labs built, um, and that's something we can definitely help you guys with as well. Questions on the technology side at all?
No.
Thanks. Um, the other, uh, point uh, point of content, the other thing we need is the GM. Uh, so we ask that supposed to be a general manager for their program, uh, someone who monitors the students' grades, someone who, um, um, checks the attendance, someone who monitors the equipment if you guys have it. Uh, much easier position than a regular coach. Uh, I was asked to coach hockey up here in Grand Forks, North Dakota this year. Um, and I was looking at the travel schedule and it was like ten hours a week alone of just travel. Uh, so we try to keep those GMs about four to five hours a week total of, um, of work for that esports program.
I have a quick question.
So back to the ten-week season. Dan, Dan, your question?
Yeah. Ken, so you said, sorry, I'm a little beat tired, but you said that most of the kids have the correct equipment already. Um, is that at their homes they have the correct equipment or is that with their school computers?
I can barely hear you, but I think I caught the question. Um, you're asking if students have the, their equipment?
Yeah, I, I just want to know, so a good portion of our students have Chromebooks.
Correct.
And that's what?
Uh, yes, so when I refer to equipment that the students have at home, I'm referring to the Xboxes, PlayStations and, and computers that they have at home already. Uh, we started our company during COVID, so all the games are being played remotely from the students' own devices. That is an option. Uh, Chromebooks do work for games like chess. Um, chess used in any, uh, uh, device with an internet connection. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, of course. Uh, lots of schools are looking at building the computer labs. Uh, maybe I can make that clear. Uh, the nice thing about the computer labs is that, uh, um, this makes it easier for your other activities as well or other, uh, classes. So I know like Aberdeen has a screen printing class that they run out of that same computer lab. Uh, if you're doing CAD or if you're doing Photoshop, most of those classes, uh, require computers with a graphics card, which is the same computers that esports program would require. Uh, so back to the season. Uh, ten weeks for the season. All your games are remote. The schools have to worry about any busing costs. Schools have to worry about any referees um, or any like facility rentals or anything like that. Um, so ten-week season, no travel for the coaches or teams or players. Um, and then there's one in-person event at the end of the season that will be hosted at a college in South Dakota and is qualified for only. So we're at a track and field. Uh, I do a little video here I can show you of a state tournament we did two years ago in North Dakota. Uh, just kind of showing the social emotional side. Uh, we bring in all the colleges. We bring in companies who are hiring, um, in the esports industry. Kind of turned into more of an expo, um, and then obviously getting the students to meet other like-minded students from across the state. Um, and, and get them into a state tournament, which allows them to, you know, hang out in the hotel room, have fun with other kids. Um, and, and then make some, some friends and potentially some new memories that I meant. Uh, we bring in show casters, we do light shows, LED displays, smoke machines, uh, make it a really fun event for everyone to come and check out. We talked about this a little bit already, but sort of the benefits of bringing in these programs, increases in GPAs, higher attendance, um, the other life skills that you get by being on a team. Uh, you know, you get appointed team captain and a little bit of leadership, communication, problem-solving skills. And then connecting them with those college programs where they have the scholarship dollars available. I mean, that's pretty much all I got. I got the pricing here pulled up. I'll say you guys a quote. Um, I apologize, this pricing slide is wrong. It's actually a thousand dollars a season for the school for next year and a hundred dollars per student. Uh, we really try to be more cost-effective than all the other programs, uh, after-school programs out there. I was up in, uh, Warren, Minnesota, a couple of weeks ago, talking to the principal up there and he said it was actually cheaper to run his esports program last year than it was to paint his football field. So.
So what is, what's the, what's the coach fee? What's that entail?
Yeah, so coaching is an optional fee. Uh, we read that up to you guys, so most, lots of small schools utilize that coaching service. Uh, because we've hired coaches from local Division One universities. So, uh, lots of schools don't have a chess expert or a Rocket League expert at their school. Um, this way you can book an online coaching session with one of those Division One coaches from around the region to come in, do a video conference and teach your, your athletes a little bit about what, uh, what those different game titles are and how they can improve in those game titles.
So is there just one class for South Dakota? Like, I mean, all the schools compete against each other regardless of size? Or do they have?
Uh, so this year we have it set up as one class, uh, due to the fact that it's a pilot program. Next year, I anticipate we'll move to a Class A, Class B system. Um, but we've seen small schools that are really excelling in this so far this year, so it's going to be a tough determination on our, on our end. Uh, to see who, who gets, those classes, we'll definitely work with high school activities to see how to best break that apart.
What's a typical team size?
Yeah, great question. Uh, so chess, obviously teams of one, uh, Rocket League is teams of three. League of Legends is teams of five and Super Smash Bros. is a team of one individual.
Oh, yeah, can you have multiple teams? If it, or, I mean, are you limited? Is each school limited to how many entries they could have in, say, chess?
Uh, nope, there's no limits. Lots of schools will set up a, uh, Rapid City Rocket League team and then JV teams as well.
Good. Any other questions?
Dan, I think that's all we've got, got for questions. Thank you.
So when, when would you have to be signed up for to compete in the twenty-four, twenty-five season?
Yeah, great question. So most of our schools, uh, will sign up here this school year, but around kind of that May timeframe. Uh, that doesn't mean we can't get you in August. Um, it's, it's a little bit tougher on our end. If everyone were to sign up in August, uh, it would take a little more resource than our end, but, uh, definitely something we can do. Usually into August, uh, sweeter team rosters in September and then that allows us to get that season schedule out in October.
Okay. And this is just.
Okay, now I'm located.
This is just.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
This is just, is it seven through twelve or what, what grades are you?
Correct, we, we do grade seven through twelve for esports.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. If you guys have any questions, um, we'll be here to answer any questions. I know we worked pretty closely with Austin already. Uh, we'll also be attending that South Dakota ED conference, so we'll have a presence there. We'll be answering questions at that event as well.
Fantastic. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you guys.
Go ahead.
Question for you, Austin. Have we, we had many kids reach out?
We did like a little test, tests. They all seemed like they were pretty good interested.
Okay.
Yeah, there were over thirty kids that were interested.
Okay. Is, is our boys and girls separated or are you all, are they lumped together? I've got to ask.
It doesn't matter. Yeah, I think it can be.
There is a boys division and a girls division, but I don't, I don't know how. I don't know how to play chess.
Yeah, I think like they showed there, like holding the kids to like, like grade standards and stuff like that would have been, would be really beneficial to someone.
So we would have to, I, I assume we'd have to have somebody monitoring them if everything was remote, just to ensure that.
Yeah, it would be just, just like we do with activity eligibility, so we would just know who's playing and there would be, I'm sure once they get it more into the SDH SAA, it'll be a lot easier to do that kind of stuff.
Do we have room in the facilities?
We have, yeah, we would have. We have a couple of rooms for us using right now. But gen, you know, they talked about a general manager. They talked about eligibility a little bit with that. Would we need like somebody just to be in charge of that? Probably.
It'd be just a coach, I would say. It'd be just a coach and it, it would just be like every other coach, you know, if you know if your kids are failing. Kind of deal, you know what I mean? Obviously, they wouldn't be allowed to participate that week, same as our other rules.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, guys. I guess that was something to look at, seems to be the way the future's going. Very deep, so I just keep growing the wrong, so, awesome. I have one resignation, which I don't want to read, but I will.
Mr. Rice.
Dear Mr. Rice and Mrs. Hader, it is with mixed emotion that I have decided to retire at the end of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It has been a privilege to be a part of this school for the past thirty-four years. Woolsey-Westington School District has always been my second family. I have been blessed to work with many great administrators, school board members and staff over the years. Many who have become great friends, one of the many reasons why this decision has been so hard. It is hard to walk away from something that you love. My love for the students and teaching made my career choice never seem like a job. How fortunate I have been to have had such an awesome opportunity to spend my days with them. I would like to sincerely thank you for everything that you have done for me, Tammy Myers. So. I need a motion to accept her resignation.
If you don't accept. She has to stay.
Is that Jamie?
Can I get a second?
Oh, in favor? Pose. We wish Tammy the best going forward. We will miss her for sure. CTE report.
Yeah, so nine, four and nine, five, uh, pretty much covered pretty well. Unless you want me to rehash?
No, 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 perfect. Uh, school lunch assistant cook opening.
We had one person apply. Uh, and apparently that person has been substituting with Kayla and has been doing an excellent job. I guess more than anything I know what the protocols are, so I don't want to step across the protocol. So, I mean, if you want to have her come in for an interview and do all of that, I'm fine with it, but I have been seeing really good work and they work together well.
Okay, and, and do you concur? I mean, I, I assume being a substitute should qualify as a interview. So you guys are comfortable in your comfort of this room?
Uh, the, the person has been a manager, stuff like that, so I think the only thing we have to figure out is what? Yes. Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Uh, the old gym flooring quote.
He's got some stuff here you guys can look at. These are just pictures from what they have on the website. Use the backup. I'm trying to turn this one over. It's the opposite. Um, the two options, it's a, like a approximately a sixty by sixty space. So the two options I quoted were, were all sixty by sixty being rubber. The other one was sixty by forty being turf. Or, sorry, sixty by twenty being turf and then sixty by forty being rubber. The turf one is about, you can see there about seven thousand more to get that sixty by twenty. If, if it was my opinion, I would say we definitely want to go with the turf, just because as you can see on that deal, it, it's just a lot safer for stuff like fire metrics and um, if we're doing like a sled drag and things like that, it's just a lot safer on the body. Jumping exercises and everything.
I'm sorry if you don't confuse. Which one is which, like?
Uh, the thirty-four thousand is with the turf.
Okay, and this?
Twenty-seven is all rubber.
This is rubber.
Yeah, if you flip, if you flip the other one over, it shows turf.
That's interlocking mat too, correct?
Correct. It's, it's, it's like two foot by two foot cubes.
Two foot by two foot.
Yeah, two foot by two foot locking cubes, so if we had.
The whole thing would be covered, not like this looks like it's half and half.
It's, I think it's just colored.
Oh.
I think it's just colored. And those are just one of the designs they had on the internet.
Got it, okay. I understand. So they're both the same thing, just different colors.
What's the life expectancy of the turf?
We, it would be, depending on which manufacturer you go with, most of them give you like a five-year warranty, so we can and especially because the, the rubber is two foot cubes, you can just replace one if, if we have problems, like a few of them or an area.
Washington High School just replaced theirs and they opened in ninety-three.
Yeah, which one did they have?
In their weight room. They had the interlocking piece. Yeah, the interlocking puzzle piece is what I call them, but yeah, they ran them for a long time and if something, uh, like if a weight actually cut through or anything else, they had that next piece, they could just put it right back in and lock it in. But it would be, I think, moving forward, you guys want to make this thing happen, let's, let's make it happen and, and have this in place for summer weekend.
Can you recommend which one?
I, I, like, in my personal opinion, I would say we want the turf just because of, like, athlete safety. I don't think you want to be jumping on rubber, rubber onto cement underneath of it.
And I think one thing we talked about too was if in track, if they wanted to set up their blocks, it was raining inside.
You could do blocks. If you put it on the north side, you could have it run out to the, the garage door and you could do like forty-yard dashes and things like that.
Jamie, you mentioned that when we were talking earlier.
Yep.
Um, a few months ago, I put a challenge out to you and the coaches to come up with some fundraising ideas.
Yes, and I, that's what I, I wanted to say that. I, we want to fundraise for all the extra equipment. We, we, that's why I came here to ask about this.
All of the extra equipment?
Yeah, because we would need, there would be other needs for equipment if we moved everything up there.
Besides what's currently in the weight room?
Yep, yep. Yeah, if we were to have a weight room with, let's say, like forty students, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't suffice currently.
Well, we're going to review these. I'm going to table it for right now.
Okay.
We'll review it. We'll talk about it. See what we got going forward.
Sounds good.
But, thank you. School calendar. School calendar. I, I'm, I'm gonna push the motion to the next meeting just so we get a chance to review it. So, I think it was emailed to everybody, correct?
Yeah, everybody emailed it.
I think everybody, okay. Everybody has it, so we'll have a chance to, we'll table it. So we're gonna table that. Any, any questions or?
Yeah.
I think, uh, we'll go back in, then Mr. Rice has said we need to get graduation on there. So we'll get graduation on there and send it out this week sometime.
Perfect. And any questions on it that you guys have seen right away? I, I haven't, okay.
I'll give you one comment real quick though, because the, the big discussion has been two weeks at Christmas with all the superintendents. And, uh, I would tell you that a good number of them are moving towards the, you know, roughly two weeks and then having a day or two of in-service at the end of that time, but then just starting the whole thing, just because of the way Christmas is.
I do have one, one comment. Um, there's a website where you can pull minutes. And I'm afraid like if you, when you say six built-in snow days, does that mean we can miss six days before we're gonna start making any up?
Yes, that's what that means. The teachers did it.
And then we're going to be at like the very bare minimum of four minutes, correct?
But we go the whole six days, yeah.
But like, we had four built in this year and one already, that's what my concern is.
Right, so then that's why they added the snow days. That, because this year is them on here, right?
Yeah, we don't have any.
So there's, but there's a snow day thing and they're next, right?
Yeah.
Coming up? That way they already have snow days marked, so if we want to put snow days on, we can use, we already have them set.
But so when you say six built-in snow days, that doesn't mean that if we, we're gonna miss six days before we make it up? Like, we could make up?
You can make up all of them if you want.
Well, that's totally up to the board. The board makes that final decision.
Okay, that's what I was.
I mean, even right now, the board could say we're gonna make up all the days we missed so far. That's a board decision.
Okay, any other questions? And, you know, we might just each email you from time to time, just so we get the, and then just throw it on the next agenda over there. Snow day information.
Okay, so we used up all four, so from here on out, we need to make up for sure. Uh, basically we tap those on at the end of the year.
So the teachers?
Basically we do, but I'm just, whatever we want to do, I'm fine.
No, I think we can use the Friday.
Yeah, and the teachers have a list of like the, the list of Fridays.
Last year we took a bunch of Fridays.
Yes, and the teachers have a list of Fridays that they thought looked best. I don't think, that's all right. I'll find it.
Yeah, find it and I'll see, because that'll be fine, otherwise.
I would plan, I would have them pick up two days already, because you know.
I think they have a list.
And we're gonna get it. Yeah, so I would say at least two days.
Right, because you guys have one.
Yeah, they're, I don't know if I got a copy.
I think March first was the first proposed ones. I know that there was at least two or three that were already proposed.
Sorry, but I know they have a list and they're pretty good about that.
Well, if they want March first, though, we're gonna have to. Well, I think that was just the first one that they, that was discussed.
Well, because I think it got so late in the year that they needed.
So basically make up days on Fridays, which is fine.
So we could, if, let's say we had to do it, let's say we get a storm, because it is supposed to snow on Wednesday. Hopefully it's fifty degrees out, that's what I meant before, but let's say it's not. Then what are we, is there a way we could add that March first some way, like in a Zoom or something? So not everybody has to meet, so we can do it quicker.
Or if you guys are all okay with it, we could go ahead and then just at the next, at the March meeting.
I would say we're gonna just say that.
If I'll need it, we can have, okay, that'll work for me. That'll be, the teachers will like that better.
Okay.
Is there no way to start after Labor Day?
Oh, you like the agrarian schedule, don't you?
Well.
I don't know, I just.
It's really hard.
I still feel like it should start after Labor Day. It'd be done by Memorial Day.
With a four-day week, it's super.
And you push, you push the first semester in after the beginning of the year to the current term.
You're just gonna start after Christmas break?
Yep.
And then as your girls get into high school, get into sports, you're like, you don't really care anymore.
Cause they're playing anyway.
Light fence, first part of August, so they got practices.
Yeah.
Okay, did you want those, did you want those days? I do have the email.
I would like them.
Uh, if it listed on here was March first, March twenty-second, April twenty-sixth, and May tenth.
Okay, March first, twenty-second, sorry, what?
That's right, March first, March twenty-second, April twenty-sixth, and then some light.
I'm just gonna put an email and send it there.
Yeah, perfect.
That would really go.
You want me to?
There's, there's four days there, so.
Yes.
But I would have them.
May tenth.
Okay, awesome. STEM club advisor.
Oh, that's me. All right. You got this. Should have been doing that while you were talking. Huh? Yeah, I'm gonna use that. But I could print you guys out, my. Don't have enough for all of you, sorry.
I was not predicting this, but you're here tonight.
Nope, okay, okay. All right, can you click on me, please? Okay, don't judge me, because I'm just getting into Canva. I'm like a PowerPoint girl and this is like my first presentation on Canva. It's like a upgraded PowerPoint that Lindsay introduced me to at one of our staff meetings, like, oh, I'm gonna try it out. Um, so kind of why I'm here is so about six months ago, I got an email about a regional science quiz bowl. And so I'm like, ooh, cool, like a science quiz bowl. Like, I haven't heard of like a quiz bowl in a long time, right? And so then I was like thinking about it and I was like, oh, well, how cool would it be to have like an academic-driven club here, Wolsey Westington? And that's, you know, emphasizing our academic talents. We have a lot of really talented academically students here. Um, we do athletics, or athletics too, and FFA and HOSA and FCCLA, they're all really talented. And their groups too, but I like to emphasize, um, more of the educational talent that we provide here and that I've been seeing since I started here. And so I kind of came up with the idea of, um, I was like, well, what would we call it, right? Like, I don't want to just say, oh, we're the Quiz Bowl team at Wolsey Westington, which, yeah, we are and I'd be proud of it. But, uh, I have kind of like a cool name, right? And so I kind of was Googling and I was like, well, how to start a club, okay? Well, then what came up is we have to have a vision, right? So that's my next slide. Vision. Um, so then I was thinking about, well, what do I want to envision like in this club, right? And so mainly I just got to thinking and science is like the most hated subject and I'm well aware that, you know, it's, it's not black and white. It's a lot of critical thinking and taking what you know and applying it in questions and labs and projects and situations and stuff. And so I mainly just kind of want to inspire students to boost their curiosity. And then additionally, to help them build skills that they could use long-term and, um, academically as they're performing on standardized tests um, and competitions and et cetera. And so, like I said, we have a lot of talent here at Wolsey Westington academically and I'd really like to showcase that side of it. So two things I'm mainly gonna talk about, it's the academic-driven side of the club. Um, and then kind of what the club would all entail. And so Quiz Bowl is one of them and STEM activities is another. And first I'm gonna talk about Quiz Bowl. So the benefits of Quiz Bowl is the opportunity to learn to, students may find it because I use my hands a lot, so just do this, hit signals, maybe come and put them down, but, uh, the opportunity to learn a variety of objects, right? So Quiz Bowl isn't just science, it's a variety of objects, just depending on which Quiz Bowl you go to. And so the development is there of the critical thinking aspect and thinking on your feet and feet and working with the team and being collaborative with each other. Uh, but they, students also would have the potential to win scholarships. And it'd also be an opportunity for them to connect on a larger level. So let's say, um, I'm actually taking ten students to the Science Quiz Bowl at the end of February. And I'm really excited about it and they're pretty excited about it too. Um, and if we win, we go straight to Washington DC. Um, and so I think that would be really cool for them to make connections and meet with the Department of Energy and the, you know, um, if you win nationally, you're gonna meet the president. And so they're all like, woo, we're not probably gonna win, but, you know, it's there. The potential's there to make connections as you keep advancing further and, um, representing your school in more ways outside of what we're just known to, okay? So Quiz Bowl, the three most common gate or competitions that I've looked into was Northern has a math and science Quiz Bowl. Um, there's a Lakota Knowledge Bowl and that's in Rapid City and that has like Native American Affairs, um, literature, science and math, all in one Quiz Bowl. Um, and you just get random questions. Um, and then the South Dakota High School Regional Science Bowl. I'm trying to find, uh, I, I'm almost positive we have a math science bowl, not science bowl, a math bowl too. Um, but I just haven't found it yet. I've been, and Ms. Keeler said she was gonna look into it too, but. So then the other side of it is STEM. And so what is STEM? It's actually STEAM now. Uh, they've included arts, but they haven't really quite, I don't know if they're really enforcing it or would you say promoting it as much quite yet? It's, it's just, it's pretty new, but, so I kept it as STEM, but STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering and Mathematics. And so I incorporate a STEM project into every unit we go through in science, because science is one of the key factors up there. It's easier to incorporate it in science and math than it is in English. And so it's basically designed for, to provide like a hand-on, hands-on learning experience for students to basically solve real-world problems in a sense. And so for example, one STEM project that we did in physical sciences, we were talking about a unit on force, acceleration, speed, um, momentum, friction, and they had to create a suspension bridge. And so like where they designed a suspension bridge. And if you don't want a suspension bridge, it's basically goes over unideal circumstances. The Golden Gate Bridge in California is a suspension bridge, goes over impulsion, right? So they had to take into consideration how we're gonna anchor it, or how, what are we gonna use to hold the boards down for it being weight-bearing and how much weight can it bear? Um, so those are some STEM projects that we incorporate or that I incorporate currently, but it'd be cool to take it to the next level. Which, um, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about STEM and then I'll go into the next level, but STEM stands for science. Um, I think I love science so much because it's constantly asking questions. I feel like there, I tell them, there's never a wrong answer, right? There's just a more correct answer. And so, uh, they're constantly asking questions, which I think is cool, because it's not necessarily just logic and set in one specific thing. I mean, you can ask multiple questions about one topic. But it also lets you allow or have the allowance to do experiments. And then if you don't get the results you want, then you try again or you have a new hypothesis. So T is for technology, new tools, new devices. I always like to resort to the ice cream machine. I think of people making ice cream back in the day and it was probably really tedious and now we just have a nice machine, you know? And then you get a nice delicious cone. And so these are invented to improve our lives and every day. Uh, ice cream machine is just one, right? E is for engineering, but this is more so for the creative aspect and the design and finding out how things work, solving problems and, you know, taking the initiative to go the next step of, well, how could we make it better? And how could we make something even more, you know, efficient? And then math, uh, math is so logic. I mean, if I have two cookies and Jim gives me two more cookies, I have four cookies unless I eat one and then I have three, right? It's very logic, uh, and, but you do learn the patterns and understand them and, um, more of the data analysis of the STEM projects. And so there's a lot of benefits. I put STEAM up there because they are converting it to STEAM, it's just not promoted yet. But I feel like the three most personally that I've seen is the critical thinking benefit, the team collaboration and the curiosity. Um, so critical thinking, a lot of people, I get pushback from it from a lot of students and a lot of parents. Because my test in my class is not memorizing definitions or, um, oh, I know the definition for a rod and I know the definition for a cone. Well, I'm curious to know the definition. I want to know which one to use at night. And so taking what you know and applying what you know into a question and project. And students hate it, I'm not gonna lie, but, uh, they're starting to love it, uh, maybe, don't ask them now, you know, but I'm kind of going the route that colleges are shifting to and preparing them for the next step so they're not boom overwhelmed. And so, um, curiosity, I had a guest speaker come in and she did different STEM activities with each of my classes. And then I was looking and I was monitoring their computers and, um, all of a sudden I see all my freshmen Googling, well, what is dark matter? What is dark energy? Because she said, if you discover it, you will win a Nobel Prize. Well, if you put that in freshman mind, like, I am doing it, you know? Um, and so just boosting their curiosity to ask more questions and be engaged with what's going on in the world around us. So there's some competitions for just STEM specifically. Um, SCSU does a good job in promoting their engineering program. And so I know that this year they did have a competition where build a robot, so it would have been where I went and got the supplies, I brought it back here and the students built it and then I took it there and they judged it. But the Swetel Center, I was talking with Ms. Stevens and Alyssa, her daughter, partake in one, an activity, um, when she was in high school in just physics and building something with the physics side of things. But something that I really want to promote, um, in STEM club is, uh, getting the younger classes involved and excited about it. Um, because then, you know, then maybe they'll love science and maybe grow a little bit of passion for stuff like that. And so, um, my, I don't want to say this is what we're going to do, because I have to feel the club out, if, if you guys do want me to have a club, of what they, what they are looking for too, but I would like them to do an activity with each grade, so like.